Welcome to the number seven City of Des Moines Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. These are our rules and procedures. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make a final decision on all matters before the Commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats. Unless denials or conditional approvals are appealed, please contact the City Clerk or the Community Development Staff for details on council hearings. Applicants will be given 10 minutes to present their request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker being allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the Commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed in the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the Commission requests that the item be removed from consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. Assisted listening devices are available for meetings in this room. And to better serve you, when possible, please notify the City at least three business days in advance at (283) 4209, should special accommodations be required. Planning and zoning Commission meetings are broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7.1 or 7.2 for customers with that service. Transportation to City of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled to and from Dart Central Station at 620 Cherry Street. To reserve your route, please call Dart On Call Scheduling at (283) 8136. Calls for trips will be accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. Please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. All right, it looks like we have a quorum. And is there any action on the meeting minutes from October 17?
All move, approval.
Thank you, Dory. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 17 meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Okay, any abstentions? So at this time, we currently have three items on our consent agenda. The first is a, well, first, I think I'll read the item, no, yeah, we'll go through the consent first. The first item is a city-initiated public hearing requiring proposed amendments to the approved zoning code, to the approved zoning ordinance, planning zoning ordinance, and citywide zoning map. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to, wishes us to pull this item from consent? Seeing none, is there anyone on the Commission that wishes to hear this item? All right, seeing none, this item will remain on consent. Item number two is a request from the Iowa Labor's Education and Training Trust Fund for review and approval of the property located in the vicinity of 4560 Hubble Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes us to pull this item from consent? Seeing none, is there anyone on the Commission who wishes to hear this item? Seeing none, that item will remain on consent. The third and final item for consent tonight is a request from the Village at Gray's Lake for review and approval of a preliminary plat, The Village at Gray's Lake, on property located at 2500 Floor Drive. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes us to pull this item from the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, is there anyone on the Commission that wishes to hear this item? All right, seeing none. So then we have those three items for the consent agenda. Is there any action, or is there recommendation action?
All move, consent.
Thank you. The motion is to approve the three consent items. All those in favor, please signify by stating, or by raising your hand. Thank you. Now, for public hearing items tonight, it's my understanding that item number five, thank you for coming. Item number five is, or item, yes, item number five, the request from Hubbell Realty for review and approval of the preliminary plat Grover Woods in the vicinity of 4500 Hubble Avenue to allow subdivision of the property into 84 single-family development flats. The applicant wishes to...
Yes, Chair members of the Commission. The applicant has requested to continue the item to the next meeting, which would be November 21st.
All right, and is the applicant present? So we'll assume that that was the wish of the applicant. Is there a motion to continue item number five to our meeting on the 21st? Yes?
So moved.
Thank you so much. All those in favor of continuing item number five to our 11/21 meeting? All right, was there any names? I think everybody voted yes. That item won't be continued. And then also, it's my understanding, item number six, the request from We Can Build It for review and approval of the PUD Development Plan Franklin Jr. High for property located at 4801 Franklin to allow mixed-use redevelopment of this site, also wishes to continue this item, is that correct, to the 21st?
That is correct, to the 21st.
All right, and is the applicant with us today? Okay, so is there a motion for continuing this item? Thank you. All those in favor of continuing item number six to our November 21 meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Right, thank you, I believe that was unanimous. So the public hearing tonight will be this. Okay, you're welcome. The public hearing tonight is item number four, which is a request from River Point West to, for review and approval of the Fifth Amendment to the Gray's Lake Landing Park PUD Conceptual Plan for property located on 205 Southwest 11th Street to reconfigure the location of a three-story office building with 68,000 square feet of office and 4,500 square feet of restaurant space, along with associated surface parking.
Chair members of the Commission, Jason Van Essen with the City's planning staff. First, before I get into my presentation, I, we're having a technical difficulty with your screens, so just, you may have to bear with us to turn around and look at the monitor behind you, because at least that is projected.
You can look at mine.
So, sorry about that, we'll see what we can do here. So this map identifies the subject property, city block, downtown area, MLK Parkway to the north, Southwest 11th Street, Tuttle, Southwest 9th. The focus of our discussion tonight is the northern part of the PUD. There's a hotel in existence, and you saw a recent project, or proposal come through for amendment to do a second hotel in the south part as well. Just quickly, the, so, office building is proposed at the north edge along MLK. This is what is on the books, this has previously been approved, so it's kind of centered in the block, had structured parking, you can see arrangement of parking, drive access to the interior of the building, and then pad site for future development at the corner A revised layout for the building is proposed, shifts the building further to the east. So closer to Southwest 9th, the biodeck. And then, the proposal also eliminates the structured parking within the building. There's also an area that's dedicated to restaurant space in addition to the office use. Building elevations that were included in your packet, very similar to what proposed The staff is supportive of the request, however, we do have some conditions that we are recommending. And I can review them if you like, but in the interest of being focused, the applicant has reviewed all of them, is agreeable to all of them except for one of them, which is condition number six, which reads, provision of a note that states upon build-out that the northwest portion of the PUD, the building shall occupy at least 70% of the street frontages along both west Martin Luther King, Jr. Parkway, and Southwest 11th Street. Furthermore, the layout of the parking lot on the PUD conceptual plan shall be revised in order to demonstrate that this condition can and will be satisfied. And what, to kind of simplify that, what we're looking for as staff is, when this PUD is completely built out, we're asking for 70% of the frontages along MLK and Southwest 11th to be fronted by a building. And where this standard comes from is the downtown overlay district standard that is applied throughout the downtown. Because this is a PUD, it pushes that to the side, so we don't have that as a, as a regulation. However, when we review PUDs in the downtown, we reference that as, as something that we should keep in mind as we review these PUDs. So, the proposal, this is a future development, this will require a future amendment to the conceptual plan, so this is going to come back to you, and we understand that as staff. The, the key for us at this point in time is that we want to make sure that the amount of parking that's developed in this area isn't great, so great that it prohibits the ability of a building to be built here that's large enough of a footprint to establish that 70% frontage along both streets. I think, I'll let the applicant speak for themselves, I think in, in general, they understand what we're trying to achieve, they have some concerns about meeting the 70%, I'll let them explain those to you. Without a, a future project, without the design of knowing what's going to go on this corner, as staff, we feel it's a little premature to say, okay, let's back away from that 70%. We feel that that's a discussion that should take place down the road, but we want to make sure that while we're having that discussion, we haven't done anything now that prohibits us from achieving that, which constructing parking beyond, you know, into this, what would be the building footprint, would, would create an obstacle that we're trying to avoid. So hopefully I've made that simple enough that it's as straightforward as it seems, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Jason, on the sheet that you gave us, there's a drawing of a proposed sign, tenant one, tenant two, tenant three, tenant four, and then a logo. It's a 20-foot sign. Where, if anywhere, is that proposed?
You know, I'll let the applicant identify their signage. They have an overall signage plan for this whole PUD, and this is an amendment, so what's in this also covers the whole, the whole PUD, so I think they'd be better able addressing specifically where, where the signs are going to go and where they're not. But the overall sign program is already, that's not being amended, that's something that was approved with previous approvals.
How did the change from structured parking to surface parking, how did that change the total parking requirement, like, or the footprint of the parking lot?
Well, if, you look at the two, two variations of the proposal, and I don't, I don't know the, like, exact number of cha, you know, stalls that are now on the site, or surface parking, but there is, the amendment does have more parking in this general area than over here, just by a visual comparison.
Excuse me, can you roll that back up again?
Yeah, actually, maybe if I do this, does that, does that help at all?
Yeah.
Show them to the left, I zoom out a little bit.
So you, there's a, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so you can see, you know, this area is not shown with parking, now it's parked. The building shifted over, so there's no need for a drive, so now there's more parking up on MLK.
Thanks.
Yep. Any other questions for Jason? Anything else?
I'll do it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So is the applicant present?
Commissioners, thanks for having us tonight. My name is Will Anderson, I'm a senior developer with Sherman Associates. Appreciate staff's presentation, we are, you know, generally in agreement with all the recommendations that staff is making, and absolutely agree that we're not here today seeking any variance from the 70% requirement on that future amended PUD site on the northwest corner. What we, what we are seeking and wanted to discuss was the ability to implement this parking here that would be, that would be impacted by the 70% requirement, implement that with this development, so we can realize kind of the parking counts that are really required of our lender and required by the market for this approximately 70,000 square foot office. What we'd like to do is, is implement these, really, it's the, it's these seven stalls right here that would be within the 70% build area. The, the requirement for this building, or, or, you know, the, the building that is ultimately implemented on the northwest corner would be approximately 186 feet. That would, that would bring the, the edge of that building, or structure, or screening to approximately here, where you see this walkway. We would like to, to implement this parking now, associated with this development, and at the time that we do have a, a user and a proposed plan for the northwest corner, come back to this team, and come back to this Commission, and present a plan that, you know, that, that we think really meets the intent, either through, you know, taking up that parking and, you know, building a structure on top of that, or potentially, should we come up with a design that is agreeable to the Commission, using some sort of architectural screening along MLK to screen that parking and meet the, the 70% requirement. That's really the, the piece that we wanted to bring to the, the group today to discuss.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Anderson?
Hey, Will, I can't read that. Is that the same drawing that we have that says 45 stalls at the restaurant and 240 stalls for Gray's Landing Office? That's what it says on the building?
The top drawing is what you have in the packet.
And just for reference, a question that was, a question that was posed earlier, that the additional parking that is to the, to the west of the, the building now, in this area up here, that approximately offsets what was, what was under the, the structure previously.
Can I answer your question, Jeff?
I guess, it just was out of focus. Up there, and I'm reading here, counting parking stalls.
Yeah, and I was curious, you mentioned, you said there was a requirement of, who's requiring you to have a certain number of stalls?
So, it's, it's really market-driven, right? So we're, we're at, we're at three point, approximately 3.25 stalls per thousand square feet within the office building here. That's, that's under market, our brokers tell us they want four stalls per thousand to really be able to effectively lease this, this building. Now, we, Sherman Associates own the two hotels adjacent to this, and we see really complementary, you know, usage of those parking stalls. Our, our hotels fill up at night, and they're all gone in the morning. Our office users are all coming during the day, of course. So we, we will seek to enter into, you know, shared use agreements of those parking stalls for the Holiday Inn Express and the Hilton True, which recently came in front of you. But, but the, the parking stalls really are market-driven, is what we need to see that, is why we need to see those seven stalls continue to be implemented in this plan.
Thanks.
So, hello, Will. So if I'm understanding this right, and I tried to make it dark enough, I don't think this and this would ever equal 70%, just eyeballing it, you know, there's some, and I think you sort of tipped your hand there a second ago when you said, and might need to come back with a screen, or, I think you're kind of tipping your hand. So I, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know how you would ever meet the 70%, unless you tore out the parking or getting ready to build.
Here's, here's Will Anderson, amateur architect, with my, you know, approximate scale at the, at the bottom. This is, this is approximately where, set, if, if the, the building is 186 feet on, on MLK, this is approximately where that would come out. So, yes, really, really what we're looking for from this, this group is an approval and ability to, to build this parking now, with the understanding that when we come back here, we, you know, should, should, should the economics for a larger building to be here work, and we can get the parking counts and everything to work, we would absolutely seek to, seek to, to implement that, that larger structure. Should that, should that not come to fruition, we would, you know, work with, work with staff and, and come in front of this board to see if there was some sort of an architectural screening that would allow us to, you know, meet the intent of that, that 70% of building frontage, while, while still maintaining that parking. That's it, that's right.
Any other questions?
Yes, could you answer my question about the signage, please? Unpack your thoughts about this 20-foot sign, would you please?
Uh, yeah, and I, I'm sorry, I need to, I need to go back and look at our master signage plan, I don't have that with me. That, again, that's a, that's a document that was approved previously by this board and others. I don't know exactly where that 20-foot sign is going at this point. I believe it's at the, I believe it, what is, what is shown in the plan is at this intersection here.
Thank you for that. I'll ask Jason a question, then. Do we have approval for a sign this tall for another property in the downtown, or elsewhere in the city?
You know, I don't have an answer for you, I can't think of a sign comparable off the top of my head, we could certainly look into it and get back to you.
The Merle Hay Mall one, maybe? I don't know, that's pretty tall.
That's a tall one, it's true. And the CVS pharmacies or drugstores have gotten really tall signs.
The Science Center is pretty tall.
Pardon?
The Science Centered sign is pretty tall.
I'm glad that he had the, the fellow standing there, because it gives a sense of scale, which is awesome. Thank you.
Yep. Chair, I actually have a question for Will, that I think, could you elaborate on any concern on Southwest 11th in your presentation? You mostly talked about MLK and what you guys are needing there, could you talk a little bit about 11th?
Yeah, certainly. So, again, we'll, we'll pull up, pull up my approximate, my approximate dimensions here. If you, if you, you know, see this, this 70% requirement would require a building of approximately 205 feet on Southwest 11th. Similarly, on Southwest 11th, you know, we, we don't have a, we don't have a planned user, we don't have a, a tenant, we don't have a project for the northwest corner yet. We are, you know, urban developers really seeking to implement urban form on this block. We want to screen the parking on the interior, but we also need to bring a project to market that has parking and that we can finance. So, well, you know, I'd, I'd, I'd like to see this 205 linear feet of, of building implemented. Again, we, we may, we may seek to implement some of that 70% screening, excuse me, 70% of, of building frontage with some sort of screening. So I would, I would, you know, just ask this Commission to, you know, allow us to kind of litigate that and consider that with the next PUD, which will come back in front of this board, that you will have the, the opportunity to approve what happens on that corner. Again, why, why I'm up here talking about it now, is just because specifically on, on MLK, is that, that area would be within this area that, that, that we're currently seeking to build parking on.
Jackie?
Great.
So wouldn't your argument still work if you'd leave, put this note on your plan and come litigate it later with us?
Yes.
Litigate?
Ask for it later, rather than now.
No, I'm not, I'm not asking for it now. I'm not asking you to, to agree to anything now beyond allowing us now to keep this parking in the, in the plan, right? So I think what the, what the staff recommendation was to amend this site plan to conform to, in the future...
No, I just asked for a note. Were you, are you willing to put this note on your drawing? It doesn't say to change the parking lot.
Doug?
Yeah.
Yeah. The, oh, parking lot, I'm sorry. Yeah, so that it should be, the PUD plan should be revised to demonstrate, basically we're asking, and, and since I'm up here, so are you not needing to construct this with this, is that, or, are you, is this, are you constructing this now and maybe would take it out like this?
No, no, we are not, we are not constructing that now. So whatever, whatever is grayed out here...
So you're, you're willing to adjust it on 11th, it's just that here, you need those numbers, is what you're saying?
Yes, that's exactly right. So, so with this, with this, with this project, we're seeking to build these, these seven stalls right here. As, as you can note, you know, somewhere in here, again, this is, this is my, you know, amateur scale, somewhere in here, the, the 186-foot building would impact these seven stalls. What the staff recommendation was, was that the, with, with this project, the, the site plan, the parking lot should be amended to remove those, so in the future, that structure could be built. What we're asking for today is just to allow this to remain in place, and then, you know, once we, once we come back to this body for a approval on the northwest corner, we would seek to either, you know, meet that 186-foot requirement, and we would remove these stalls, or we would seek to meet the intent of that 70% requirement, and put some sort of, you know, screening along MLK here to, to meet that, to meet that requirement.
Two questions. One, so was it just economics that led you to, to move from the structured parking to what we're seeing now?
We couldn't get a tenant to pay for the structured parking, the costs associated with the structured parking, that's right, it's economics.
All right, and then, just help me out, so you're saying that you could, you could go and get it funded with these seven, but then come back and get rid of the seven when you build a new building, your funders won't be upset with that change? I don't know how these things work, really, so I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so I mean, at that point, at that point, we'd be potentially building up more stalls down here, right? So again, because, because we own, because we own all of this, we have the opportunity for, for some shared use of the, of the, of the parking stalls in the future. Again, right now, we're not building out any of these stalls that are, that are, that are grayed out here. And again, this, this, this structure that's shown here, obviously, that's not, that's not what we're going to, that's not what we're going to implement, that is just a placeholder at this point. That this, this, this northwest corner is coming back before this, this body to review and approve the project.
To Greg.
Yeah, in the future, it'd be awesome if, if you actually came, instead of just your, what'd you call him, Will Architect, I mean, come with a drawing, that'd be great.
Apologize for that, yeah.
I really think that we're, we're sort of splitting hairs here, and I understand what you want, but to me, when I quickly look at this, this area of parking here, I'm not sure why, but it seems fairly inefficient, in that you have two single-loaded drives, the pretty substantial walkway. I think this thing could be tightened up and re... I think this thing could be tightened up and rethought, and I know you guys can take a look at this and get a whole lot closer to this 70%, so I, I don't know why that couldn't be looked at, and maybe it hasn't been looked at, but the, I think you could get a whole lot closer than you are now. Uh, this would be a monster gap on Martin Luther King. Too big. I mean, would you guys be willing to look at this?
And Tim, maybe you want to talk a little bit? You, maybe you want to talk a little bit about the process that we went through for the, the parking layout and how we did arrive at it? I know that some of the, some of the, the changes were driven by, obviously, comments on the, uh, the Hotel True PUD, and we, we did, you know, widen some islands, we added substantially more landscaping on the interior of the block, uh, and that caused some, some parking stalls to move around.
Uh, good evening, Tim West with Steiner and Associates. Uh, we, we really were trying to modify the site to accommodate those underground parking stalls and make sure that we had the yield, that we were at least trying to make it even to what we had before. Uh, I would agree that the single-sided or single-loaded drive aisle is something that we would normally avoid, but we had to hit a certain number of stalls there so that we could have the overall needs for the, uh, office and restaurant, uh, defined in the north half or so of the property. Uh, the hotel has a specific amount of stalls that they require as well, which exceeds the city requirement significantly. So we're looking at, there's kind of a mix of parking in here that we're trying to hit an overall number rather than this, this one gets this much and this one gets that much. We can certainly modify that area in there as we move forward into the site plan drawings. I believe we have picked up a few stalls since the submittal of the PUD versus the submittal of the site plan. I hope that answers your question on that.
Some, thanks.
Can I ask a question, Tim?
Sure.
So I'm looking at this drawing that we've all been provided, and I asked earlier about the numbers, 240 and 45 on the proposed office building. See those? Is that how many are required for that building, or is that what was once incorporated in the building?
That's based on what was desired by the, I think by the.
The lenders, as you said.
Leasing and, and the.
Okay, so you, so you need 240 for the office building and 45 for the restaurant, is what I'm hearing, right?
Yes, approximately.
Okay, so now drop down to the Holiday Inn, it says 97 parking spaces on the roof of that building, you see that?
Yep.
Okay, so that must mean they needed 97?
That's correct.
So now we're going to go over to, what is the, is it the True building?
Hilton True. That one requires.
How many do they need?
98, and we show 99 in that site area.
Okay, so if that building needs 98, Holiday Inn needs 97, the new office building and restaurant require 285. Now let's go into the interior parking and count stalls, which I did, you labeled them there, I just circled them all, I think it adds up to 475 total stalls, is that what you think?
This is too many.
Um, well, I think if you don't count, uh, you'd have to deduct this stuff off to the northwest.
I've just seen the, I'm just going by the numbers that are given to us here. I got 67 stalls northwest, 100 kind of central, 99, uh, southeast, and 219 or whatever it is above that. Add, I added it up to 475. Is that, is that a real number, or is that something that's?
No, those are, those are real, real stalls that are delineated on the drawing.
Okay. So does the 475 add up to the needs of all of those office buildings so far?
If you add all of those numbers up, you have approximately 100, 200 on the two hotels. You have the 240, that gets you to 440, and then you have another 45, so that gets you to 485.
485.
But just to clarify, you're not building the stalls in the northwest right now, the grayed-out ones?
Right.
Any other questions?
No, all I was trying to do is figure out how many parking stalls are on the interior of this piece of property that they own.
Mm-hmm.
475 or 485, if my math is.
That's right, count it.
Jackie?
Yeah.
So, my initial reaction to this project was, it looks like we're building a big parking lot. So are, how are we addressing, we do this in other parts of the city, how, are you addressing it with, like, permable concrete, or how are you being good to our environment? Because it's a lot of concrete here.
There is, we, we, one of it is, uh, that we've reduced that footprint as far as we can for just to accommodate the, the uses associated with this, with the, the four or five buildings, four buildings that could possibly be here. Uh, what's not shown here is we have an underground stormwater, um, system which would filter the stormwater as it's collected on-site, and it would be filtered through, uh, rock chambers and through a filtering row with the StormTech system. That gets released in the storm sewer system and gets transported all the way down to the public, uh, storm sewer system, it goes on to the stormwater park in Hubble's property off to the southwest. So we're kind of maintaining our stormwater quality requirement without being overly required to do so. Um, that's one of the aspects that we're doing, that we'll be cleaning up stormwater in here. We're also looking at native plants, we're looking at, um, implementing those in as many islands as necessary or as possible to, uh, try to maximize open space in the area as well.
So when you say the islands, do you mean the circled?
Mm-hmm. There's also two large islands, one along the length of the Holiday Inn, that north-south island, see here, right here?
Mm-hmm.
And there's another large island here, and another large island here. Those are, have depressions to them that, that lead to intakes also, that also feed into an underground detention basin, or underground detention cells. So there's a number of those items being implemented. Um, some of the patios that are associated with this property, we've talked about permeable pavers, uh, there's one located outside of the restaurant, there's two located on the south side of the, uh, new hotel or proposed hotel. So where we do have areas, we are trying to implement stormwater best management practices.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, um, is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the project? Okay, is there anyone who has questions or concerns? Seeing none, Jason, is there anything else that you need to respond to?
No, I'm in the interest of maybe helping you guys think through motions or whatever. It sounds to me like you're not necessarily opposed to the condition on Southwest 11th because you're not building anything there, is that correct?
That's right.
So it's really where we're at a pass is really on MLK?
Say it again, because you were facing, I didn't catch it.
Yeah, uh, good catch. Um, they're not opposed, the condition number six, the way that's written with the 70% and changing the drawing, they're not opposed to that, um, that's, that could, uh, as far as they're concerned, they are okay with that condition for Southwest 11th, but MLK is really the focus of where we're at a pass.
Thank you. All right, um, at this time, you would have had a chance to rebut any concerns, but there were none. So I think we'll go right ahead to the public hearing, or closing the public hearing. So, Commission, what is your recommendation?
Well, I have a question. So basically, Jason, what you just said is they agree to all the conditions, right? Or does number six need to be rewritten?
Well, number six, the part, um, I would, if we were to rewrite this to reflect their position, we would just strike the references to MLK. If you had any other references that you wanted about a future building or something like that, we could create new ones.
Exactly.
Um, so, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I think my concern was, while I understand and I, I'm somewhat in agreement, how do we write it so that, um, you know, that they really do have to adhere to this when a new building is?
If you were to go down the path of letting the parking be constructed now?
Yeah.
Um, I would probably add, I would, on six, I would probably amend it to strike out the references to MLK, and then we would create a new condition that referenced the MLK, something along the lines of that the, you know, parking can be constructed, or, you know, uh, when the building at the corner is developed, it, you know, 70% frontage should be worked towards, you know, I'm, I'm, if you give me a few minutes, I can come up with some better language than this, but I'm just trying to, you know, like, just something along those lines that, when it comes back, that's the goal, with the reflection of understanding the parking may be allowed.
Jackie? I would be in favor of that. Greg?
Ja- Jackie, I'm not in favor of that, and I think it's very important that, especially on MLK, if we have a 70% requirement, that it's not just for screening of a parking lot, which is nothing. It needs to have the bulk of a building there, a three or four-story building, so it looks like something when you drive by, rather than, I mean, the object isn't to screen the parking, even though that's part of it, it's just not to have parking there at all, it's to have a building there. So, m- my thought is, we need to leave staff's recommendation alone, and, because if, if they build parking here, they're going to come back in and they're going to say, well, we don't want to do it, we don't want to take out the parking, we're going to put this tiny little building on the corner, and please, 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 could you allow us to put some tiki-tacky little screening in front of our parking and not meet the requirement? That's what they're going to do. And so, I think we need to solve it now, we're, we're on MLK, and so staff solves it by making that request. So, I think we need to stick with it.
So who's making the motion?
I'll make the motion. Who's that?
All right, the motion is.
Wait, were you going to say something?
Oh, I was just going to say exactly, kind of echo what, what Greg was saying, once they have constructed something, you know, the ball is in their court, and then we're going to just kind of, you know, sit back and say, oh, well, and we'll lose the game. So, I support Greg's motion.
All right, so the motion on the table is to support staff recommendation of the proposed amendment to the PUD conceptual plan, subject to conditions one, two, three, I'm not reading them because they weren't, I'm reading this with them, one, two, three, four, five, six remains as written, seven, eight, nine, and 10. All of those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hand. All right, thank you very much, thank you. I think that's it, right?
We did.
Um, any directors, any reports?
Um, I don't have any reports for you, but we did also had the, uh, on, in your pack would have been the 2020 meeting calendar, so I believe we normally ask for a motion, ratify that, and adopt it for next year, so you can have that.
Tonight?
Yeah.
You want us, okay?
Okay.
So, um.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. All of us in favor of approving the schedule of 2020 meeting dates, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposition? All right, so that concludes our business tonight, correct? You don't have any other business?
Well, we do have to wish Frances a happy birthday.
Well, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Can you please put those notes?
Wait a minute, you joined us on your birthday, I'm impressed.
Yeah, so I won't be here until the 21st, so I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Out of town.
All right, well, happy.
Well, beyond duty.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, because we have a new association now. All right, so.